Recording in progress.
All right, why don't I call us to order? I apologize for not being there in person today. I'm feeling a little under the weather and I don't know if it's contagious or not, but I figured I'd spare everybody the stomach bug that I picked up somewhere over the last few days. The, um, let's go ahead and jump in. I know, Dr. Nassi, you wanted to introduce, uh, well, call us to order and then you wanted to introduce 2.1 before we turned it over to Dr. Richmond?
Yes, thank you, Board Chair Taylor. I appreciate it and thank you all for being here. I know a lot of you are just getting back here in the last 24 hours from the Association of Community College Trustee event, so I appreciate it. Just wanted to preview the study session this evening before Dr. Richmond gets up here and leads us in this conversation. So this is about Chancellor's Goal Number Two, which is completing Phase One of the college's integrated planning process for 2026 through 2030. An important goal, it's one of our top institutional priorities, obviously, being a chancellor's goal for the year and really sets the foundation for how we think about planning, how we invest, how we serve our community well into the next decade. As you know, when I arrived a little over a year ago, the college's strategic plan was nearing, was at the end, it was at its conclusion, and at that time, the board had made its decision to extend that plan. You know, since that time, I am pleased, there's been a lot of work done in the last year and whatever, a couple of months, that we've really transitioned into more of an integrated planning framework, you know, that moves beyond that traditional cyclical model, right? Make a strategic plan, kind of happens, you go through it, start a new strategic plan. This is a really important distinction, right? An integrated plan is certainly strategic, but not all strategic plans are integrated. So, an integrated approach really thinks about every major planning effort at the college, number one, so whether that's academics, facilities, technology, enrollment, student success, it's all aligned, interconnected, and supports a shared vision for Pima's future. Also, I think what's important about an integrated planning process is, is that planning at Pima should never really stop, right? It doesn't like begin and end and then you're done, right? As a learning organization, as an adaptable organization, we're always thinking about implementing the current plan and developing the next. So it leaves room for adaptive planning, so I think that's a big difference in this, in this new model. And so tonight's session, of course, focuses on mission review, a large part of it, but we see this as part of a larger and ongoing conversation with the board about integrated planning. So your insights tonight will really help shape our purpose, our mission, our vision statements, and really guide the priorities that will anchor the next integrated plan. It doesn't seem that long ago that we were here talking about those things. I know the board gave some direction for us to kind of go back and think through those things. And since then, there's been a lot of work done, so I'm eager for Dr. Richmond to, to lead us through that conversation. I want to thank her, I want to thank Dr. Richmond for her team for leading this work and look forward to your perspectives and guidance as we continue this important process together.
Thank you. Dr. Richmond, you want to come up?
Good evening, Chair Taylor, members of the board, Chancellor Nassi, colleagues and guests. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here this evening to touch on a number of different elements of the integrated planning process that the chancellor spoke about and to gather your perspectives, to hear your leadership as we move forward in this important process. To give you an idea of what to expect, I'll give you a brief review of the purpose, so you know going into this what we will be asking for the board's input as we go through. Then I'll give you a brief, very brief overview of the integrated planning philosophy and how this is different from what we did before. Then we'll spend a chunk of time with the mission fulfillment framework. We talked about this at a study session in late spring. The board gave your perspectives, made some requests for some adjustments, and so we've made those changes. We took the adjustments forward at the Futures Conference and requested input from attendees there. And here, we will bring back input from the Futures Conference and request the board's guidance on next steps. And I'll mention here, I will likely mention this again, I would like to thank board members Rial and Dr. Barazza for attending the Futures Conference and being there to share your leadership there at that event. And then finally, we'll wrap up by talking about potential priorities for the institution as we move forward beyond mission review and into the new integrated plan, which we'll bring forward for the board's approval by June of the latest of the current academic year. So through this presentation today, we are requesting your input and guidance on three main topics. First, the integrated planning approach itself, which I'll tell you a little bit about so you can provide feedback and give guidance. Then the draft purpose, mission and vision statements. Two of those are fairly close to what the board saw in the spring. For the vision statement, that's really quite different from where it was before based on the feedback we received from the board. And then, as mentioned, we'll talk about priorities initiatives for the integrated plan. So to set the scene a little bit, work is currently underway to conclude the 24-26 extension to the prior strategic plan. So that's going on, we're working on implementation, that's one branch of planning that's underway. In parallel with that, we're developing the next integrated plan as outlined in Goal Two as Chancellor Nassi spoke to. There are two, actually more than two, but two main groups as it relates to the topic of conversation for today. We have a planning leadership group comprised of the leads for the different core areas of planning, education master planning, facilities master planning, strategic planning, et cetera. And then we also have a strategic planning team, which is the group that's been taking the lead on the review and development of recommendations around the statements that we'll look at today. Some members of the strategic planning team are here today, so they can hear firsthand the input from the board. And also, my co-chair, Michaela Hayes, is here as well, and she will likely come up and share comments as well from the perspective of the strategic planning team. So first then, an overview of the integrated planning process. Now, the graphic you see here shows planning, how it used to work at the institution if we go back two or three years. So this includes the last comprehensive planning process that happened around about 2016 and moving forward from there. We had a number of key plans, but they were developed separately, and while there was some collaboration across plans, they were largely developed in isolation. This resulted in a high number of institutional priorities, and so that gave a sense of the institution being overwhelmed. Too many priorities, people didn't know where to focus, and it was hard for us to really make meaningful change on a small number of high priority initiatives. The approach we're looking to now is to develop an integrated plan which is informed by planning related to education, facilities, IT, strategic enrollment management and more. We still have the subject matter experts involved in each of those areas, but that planning work comes together through the integrated planning process to ensure that everyone is all lined up, priorities from one area are shared with the other areas, so we're all working from a common set of priorities, a common set of understanding of where the institution needs to go. The result from this is going to be a smaller number of more closely aligned priorities so that we're truly focused on one common set of priorities institution-wide, informed by all of the subject matter experts from across the institution. This, of course, connects into the annual chancellor's goals, and it also connects into our operational plans as well. So we have a full framework that connects from the strategic down to the operational level of individual units. As mentioned by Chancellor Nassi, and to make sure this is clear, because it can get a little confusing, back in the day, it used to be that you could develop a plan, your plan was great, you'd work your plan for four years, five years, everything was great, then you'd have a short planning process and introduce a new plan. Such is the pace of change in the world today, that we don't really have the luxury of being able to do that anymore. We need to check our plans, review them annually, to ensure that they are still focused on truly the most important priorities, because, because of the changes in the world, technology, how connected we are, just the pace at which the world changes now, we need to make sure that we are constantly reviewing and revisiting our priorities. Of course, though, we cannot just be reacting, changing things year by year by year, we need stability too. So planning in higher education and elsewhere is a balance between the long-term planning for big, major initiatives a college might undertake and ensuring that we are constantly monitoring and constantly planning for what, where we might need to adjust or where we might need to pivot. As a result, any given time, there are two plans underway at the institution. One plan is being implemented and is being reviewed annually to ensure it's still pointing in the right direction and taking us where we need to go. And in parallel with that, we're conducting another major planning process to make sure that we're getting ready for the next major plan when it needs to come online. So constantly implementing and planning. The one, of course, directly feeds into the other, so we have this ongoing framework of we plan, then we implement, we plan, then we implement, moving along in parallel.
Real quick, we just want to make sure, this is a study session, we build in time for feedback. Are there any questions, thoughts on integrated planning? And, you know, and I think Dr. Richmond read a good point, but it's also about learning, right? You implement, you learn some stuff, oh, maybe we need to change how we plan about this, right? It's part of that learning organization cycle as well. Okay. We, I know we've built in other times in the presentation, but I just, I can't answer without the chair next to me, so I just wanted to make sure there was time.
Thank you, Chancellor. And I would say, at any point, if any of you have questions or comments, please jump right in. We do have places intended to pause and gather feedback, but anytime there are questions, please go ahead and ask. So as it currently looks for the timeline for the integrated planning process currently underway, we're approaching this as three phases. The first phase will go into effect in July of the upcoming year, so the start of the next academic year, and it will run through for four years, taking us through to summer of 2030. During that plan implementation time, we will be in parallel engaging with an external consultant, so we can do a true comprehensive education and facilities master planning process. This is a very time-consuming effort, it's hard to always have internal resources available to do that, and it can be very advantageous to bring in an external group with higher education planning expertise, who can bring that expertise, work with the institution and conduct that work in partnership with the college. That will be conducted during the next, during Phase One of implementation, and that planning work will inform the priorities that will be developed for Phase Two, which would go into effect in 2030. Then there would be a mid-plan review in 2035, and then the plan would conclude in 2040. I realize that sounds like a very, very long period of time. Important notes, first, an annual review each year, just to make sure things are heading in the right direction, is there anywhere we need to pivot? But the second reason is, we have an intentional 10-year horizon for the planned work that's developed in partnership with the external consultants. That parallels what we did last time, when our education and facilities plans came online in around about 2015, 2016 kind of timeframe. Through that planning work, the college committed to the Centers of Excellence that we now have in place at downtown campus, at West Campus and at other locations. Those are substantial undertakings that are very resource-intensive, and they're not projects that we can complete in like a couple of years, they're not things that we can kind of, would pivot away from, they're big substantial commitments. And so it's part of that balancing I talked about, we need to be responsive in the short term, but we need to have that long-term horizon in mind to ensure we're, we're taking the action now that will build the college that we want to see 10, 15 years down the road. And some of those undertakings will be substantial in nature and will take that kind of timeline to complete. Phase One, though, as noted, forms the basis of one of the chancellor's goals for this year. This will be brought to the governing board for your input and approval in June. We'll also have a study session in March, so that you can see an early view of the draft priorities and provide your feedback, your guidance, to help shape that plan. So the first time you see it will not be in June, you will be heavily involved in the process as we get there. So that kind of gives you a little bit of an overview of integrated planning as we're thinking about it, and I would like to pause here. Does this sound in keeping with what the board would want to see for a planning process for the institution? Do you have feedback, questions, concerns?
I'm, I'm trying to decide how to ask this question, because I'm not sure it's constructed properly yet in my mind, but I really do appreciate the integrated planning, because it does remove silos, it does create a very collaborative approach to have all units be involved. I'm wondering, do you have any concerns with over-centralization or overload of too much information happening at the same time? I apologize ahead of time, like I said, I, I'm thinking through my question, so I might ask the question differently later, but...
And that's absolutely fine. So, there's always the challenge of resources. Planning is an intensive activity. The way we're engaged in this, though, actually distributes that. It sounds centralized and in a way, the coordination is centralized, but the planning still lives within the areas who are the subject matter experts. I use information technology as an example. Assistant Vice Chancellor Abs is leading an IT strategic planning team, who are busy working through the priorities from that IT perspective. Michaela and I are leading the strategic planning team, thinking about planning from that perspective. And so we have different groups across the institution focused on different aspects of this integrated plan, and then the leads for those plans meet monthly to make sure we're in communication, that we're sharing the things emerging. So it sounds like it creates a major central burden, but really, the centralized component is just coordinating across the different areas. So we still have the distributed time and effort across units. Does that address what you're asking?
Yes, but, but I have a follow-up question. Because of the timeframe, and like you said, it's pretty extensive, do you foresee any challenges, challenges with keeping momentum, to keeping people engaged and connected? But I'm sure, I'm sure you have a plan, but do you anticipate any challenges with the momentum of moving it forward?
That's a great question, and that's often the challenge. We have multiple priorities and trying to keep everything moving forward. The goal is always within major planning to come up with initiatives, communicate them broadly across the college, so people understand why we're doing these things. I think oftentimes, if we can see what the prize is we're working towards, that we have an initiative that will significantly increase student outcomes, it will significantly increase student retention, there's a whole lot of very passionate employees at this institution that want to see those things increase. And so I think demonstrating the value and making, making sure it's front and center for leadership and taking that to their teams, we can help maintain that direction.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess my, my concern was more along the lines of speaking very transparently, the unpredictability, and it's a long timeframe, so new people might come along, positions might change, titles might change, so that's, I, I was referring more in that sense. I think we're very fortunate to have very dedicated employees, faculty and staff, so I see that, I'm just a little concerned with the timeframe, keeping the momentum if there's changes in leadership, if there's changes, and I mean in the unit leadership, if there's changes in, in, just in general staff, and just making sure that momentum stays continuing.
It's a great question, and the reality is, if we have a major change, Chancellor, may I use you as an example? Let's say the chancellor changes partway through the plan. It's possible we could pivot away from this partway through. Part of the reason for an annual review is to ensure, are we sure this is still taking us in the right direction? Based on what we know today, are we confident we're still moving the right way? And there could be changes. The governing board will be the ones who approve the plan. 10 years from now, we may have the same governing board, we may not have the same governing board, and institutional priorities may adjust over time, and we need to be, and it's that balance, right? We need a vision of where we're going, but it's fluid. It could change and we have to be responsive if things change over time, be that directions, priorities, individuals in positions.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you. Yeah, being nimble is going to be a priority, of course, being able to adjust and pivot as much as we need to. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would, I would just add, Vice Chair, I think the integrated planning process allows for more adaptability and flexibility, but that's always going to be a change. And so part of it, I think, too, will be, as you get Phase One in June, is making sure that we have really clear accountability benchmarks, because whoever changes wherever, we always have to come back to the board and say, okay, where are we with Phase One? And where are we thinking about now for Phase Two? Things have changed in Phase One, so what about Phase Two now? We've got different people in different spaces, or who knows? We've even seen in this year around resources, things can wildly change quickly. How we're planning around a variety of things that, that may have been funded in different ways, right, is, is an interesting idea, you're right, but we, I think that's one of those things, is that cadence of how are we checking in on each other? So, it's a great observation.
Hi, Nick, thank you for being here. When we were in, at ACCT, I attended quite a few different workshops and sessions on strategic planning, because I don't really, I've read them before, but I don't really know how you did them or any of that. The three things that I came away from some of those workshops were that if, if, if it's not written down in the plan, it doesn't happen as far as our goals and what we want to do. So I appreciate that you said, you know, we don't want to have myriad goals in the strategic plan, but I think it's important that we make sure we have the right goals in the plan. The second thing they said was, another workshop said that funding needs to be tied to the ma, the strategic plan, I hope I've been saying strategic plan, that's what I meant for all of those. Funding needs to be tied to the strategic plan, and we're in a weird situation now where federal funds and state funds are not necessarily going to be supporting community college if they continue to be what they've been for us. So I, at some point now or in March, I'd like you to talk more about how all of that is integrated to the funding. And then the last thing they said, and this sort of struck a bell, because they said if you don't assess your master plan, it's sort of a waste of resources and energy of all sorts of amazing people, because if we write the plan, but we don't make sure we're attaining those goals, and then it just jumped into my head, the whole thing that we had one of the, I can't remember what it was called, but it was, you know, increase our completer counts in two minority categories of students by double what they were, and I don't think we ever did that. I could be wrong, but we haven't, we haven't had any, any sharing on that since the last time we heard about it, a year or more ago. And so I'm just wondering, how, how are you also integrating into this whole process the idea of evaluating this plan when it is? Because I know, I saw the two implementation and then design for the next year, but part of not just implementing it, but we also need to be assessing it and, you know, looking at data to make sure that we're, we're doing what we wanted to do.
Great points, thank you. So in terms of how we're assessing, so for the current strategic plan, and as we envisage the integrated plan as well, we will have key performance indicators built in there that we're working to achieve. So targets for specific points within the plan, likely around access persistence and outcomes as a primary measure as a student success, as we might think about it at the institution. And so making sure that we have regular, ongoing monitoring of those KPIs, inform groups as needed to ensure that if there's a KPI that's making good progress, great. If there's one where we have reason from leading indicators to think, ah, we're not sure we're going to make that one, to ensure that we have those conversations internally, bring it to the attention of the chancellor, so action can be taken to make sure things are online and moving forward. But your, your perspectives are really valuable and we will, we will take those into account and ensure we're considering them as we build the plan. And you asked about finances. I can go into a little bit more detail now, but I believe it might be planned for an upcoming session, but a short answer is the, the team of leads for each of the planning areas. It includes Dr. David B. Specifically for that finance perspective, he isn't leading one of these specific plans, but we need to make sure we have the financial resources to whatever we commit to. And we ensured that Dr. B would be part of that group, precisely so we can make sure financial considerations are directly baked into the planning process. But thank you. Other comments on the integrated planning process for now?
I was, I was wondering, what initiated the change in previous planning to the integrated planning overview? And are more colleges doing it this way now? Help me understand, like, why? Why are we changing?
That's a great question. So through our last comprehensive planning process, we identified some really significant improvements for the institution. I would highlight Centers of Excellence as one of the main ones that came out of that. But one of the weaknesses that we found was there was a disconnect for the groups working on one area of planning, were not directly communicating with other groups involved in planning, and it was still an ongoing of the somewhat siloed approach that we've had institutionally for a number of years dating back quite a long time. So one of the motivations is to get away from those silos and maintain subject matter expertise, but ensure that there's strong communication across those different areas. It's really a best practice around planning to make sure everyone is kind of pointing in the same direction and having connected conversations. And through this approach, we can do that much more effectively than we can when it's all in kind of different areas and all siloed out. It also led to a lot of priorities, and it was hard from an employee point of view to know what the most important thing was. You would need to look at the education master plan, the facilities master plan, the strategic plan, the chancellor's goals, various other higher-level plans the institution had in place at those times, and it was difficult. It was kind of like a mass, it felt like we were surrounded by priorities, and so there was no, there was, there wasn't really a priority, because everything was a priority spread across these different plans. And so what we're trying to do is consolidate, simplify and make sure we're focused on the most important things. I would say, within the wider world of higher education planning, this has been a trend, institutions are going this way. Not all institutions do approach it this way, some are still kind of separated out, but I think, from what I see from some of the planning organizations, this is more the recommended direction to go, to support that collaboration, lack of silos, and to truly get to the, the most important things, so we can make significant improvements on a small number of areas, as opposed to having a huge number of priorities and really just diluting our efforts, so we don't really move forward in a significant way.
Thank you. One follow-up question. I appreciate the ability to, like you mentioned, pivot or reassess what's going well and what isn't, but is there also the situation where it's like planning fatigue, continuously planning and planning? I don't know if you can speak to that, or we haven't really, we don't know yet.
It's a really good point, and it needs to be a balance. Historically, we heard this through some of the HLC visits in the past, the college is really good at planning, but we're not very good at implementing. And it's because we were put so much time and effort into developing these plans, and there wasn't a similar, always a similar amount of effort around implementation. There are, of course, obvious exceptions. Again, the Centers of Excellence is an obvious exception, where there was very good execution by the institution. And so that's one of the things we need to be very mindful of, that we don't commit so many resources to planning that we're not actually successfully implementing. And again, it's another of the balances we have to find. I don't know that we will get the perfect balance when we first implement the integrated plan, but it's another area where we need to keep an eye on things, things moving forward. If we're doing a mini-review at the end of a year, is no one showing up to any of the sessions we're running, which might be a sign that people are just like, enough, enough, we don't want to have this conversation right now, and we're just going to have to carefully monitor it and keep an eye on it and make sure we make progress on the KPIs and the milestones that we build into each year, and ensure that there is a group and opportunity to make sure that we continue monitoring. And sometimes the annual review can be relatively short. It doesn't have to be a big month-long process, it could be something that we could do in a fairly short timeframe, just to touch base, just to make sure, and then carry on. You're welcome.
Yeah, just because it's a study session, I think it's a good point around planning fatigue, but I almost feel like it happens anyways, like, so in a traditional strategic planning, like, something's happening and, and going well or not going well, you automatically say, well, what will be the plan, or what are we going to do next time? But there's not a formal framework for it, and I think at least here, you would say, okay, well, we know there's Phase Two and we should be thinking about it, and so now we can take these lessons learned based on our assessment from Board Member Rial's point, that there is at least a formal structure to do that, where I think before, it just is kind of happening anyways, I think you're always doing it anyways as an educational leader, right? You're, you're learning of what's working, what's not working, and hopefully, you're making plans, you're, you're kind of balancing that tactical versus strategic conversation. I'm glad now, though, there'll be a framework to say, okay, we know we can take these and use them in this thing that's not, we can pivot. So I think there's all kinds of different ways, I think that's a, an interesting point. I will say, my ex- different ways. I think that's a an interesting point. I will say, my personal experience in coming into the institution, it was difficult for me to discern the relationship between the various plans, right? Obviously, I had familiarized myself with the strategic plan, now the strategic plan extension. But what was the relationship between that and the facilities master plan, and then the education master plan, and then the technology plan, right? All these plans that we had in different spaces at the college, it was difficult. And I there probably is a thread there, but it wasn't easily seen. Whereas an integrated plan, that's part of it is meshing those things together.
Are there other questions, comments from the board? Or shall I move forward to the next section?
I just had a quick comment, just to that I appreciate this process. You know, I've been part of plenty of organizations over the years where strategic planning is you spend a lot of time in a conference room, and it turns into a binder that sits on somebody's shelf and collects dust for a number of years. But this seems to be dynamic and responsive, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, let's move forward to our next topic. Let's talk about mission review. So mission review at the institution always occurs in the year preceding a comprehensive planning process, so we can ensure that our guiding statements are current accurate, and that we can use those as a foundation for our planning work. For the current process, it's been ongoing since late fall of 2024. It was actually the very tail end of the fall. It really started properly in the spring. This has included extensive stakeholder engagement. We've had open sessions at the campuses. We've conducted surveys. We've had two futures conferences that have talked in part about mission review. And then the servers, I should note, have gone out to employees, community members, and students as well, so we can ensure we're gathering input from all key stakeholder groups. Guidance and perspectives that you provided at a study session in the spring were used to update the statements. And we took the updated statements to the very recent October 25 Futures Conference. Again, thanks to Board Members Rial and Dr. Barasa for being there at the event. What I'm going to do briefly is review the input we received through the Futures Conference, just so all members of the board have the opportunity to see that. Provided in the executive summary is a document that gives all of the open comment feedback that was provided on the three statements, so you have access to that as well. And we'll work our way through the statements, and then at the end, have a discussion about the three, so you can provide your perspectives, your guidance on next steps. Before we talk about the specific statements, just as a brief reminder about what these statements are. So the purpose statement defines why the college exists. What's our fundamental reason for being? Mission is more operational in nature. It describes the services we provide, to whom we provide those services, and it really describes the college today. Then we have the vision statement, telling us where the institution is going. Now, these statements don't live in isolation. The three really work together it as a group. Things don't have to be included in all three statements. They can be included in one statement, and so we don't have to kind of repeat everything in every place. So these are the statements, as it currently looks as approved for the institution from our previous planning process. So purpose, transforming lives through affordable education. The vision statement, as a premier community college, Pima Community College will be a catalyst for personal transformation, economic growth, and cultural prosperity that enriches our diverse community. Then we have a relatively long mission statement with the tagline, empower every learner every day for every goal, and then language that elaborates on that, what we mean by that statement. So these are the statements as currently approved. Through the process that we've been working on, we have a new set of draft statements, which you see listed here. And I'll explain a little bit about the origin of the vision statement as we go through. But these are the current leading draft statements for the board's input and perspectives. So purpose, expanding opportunity through quality education. This was revised per the board's input to remove affordable. So that was a change here. For mission, Pima Community College empowers learners through accessible, high quality education that leads to university transfer, meaningful careers, and lifelong contribution aligned with industry and community needs. This has changed a little bit from the one you saw before. We worked to build out the focus on community needs, the workforce connection, and we also removed open admissions, which the board's input suggested that was captured within accessible, and that that was a concept there, which also captured affordable. So accessible carries a number of important meanings within this statement. And then the vision statement, Pima Community College will be a catalyst for personal transformation and regional progress by removing barriers, opening doors, and helping people in our community thrive. This is very different from the statement you you saw before. Prior input from the board was that you were seeking something more aspirational than the statement we brought forward. And I'll explain where this one came about as we work through the input from the Futures Conference. So what we'll do is we'll go through each of the statements. I will I will keep moving through all three before I pause for input. The reason for that is when we went through and analyzed the Futures Conference input, there was a lot of repetition for the input around purpose, mission, and vision. So rather than wordsmith each one, we'll go through the three, give you a summary of the input from the Futures Conference, and then talk about them as a set. So you can talk about if there are changes that you would like to see made across there. So our draft purpose, expanding opportunity through quality education. Per voting at the Futures Conference, most attendees were relatively positive about this statement. Forty-two said that this statement does a very good job of reflecting why the college exists today. Fifty-four respondents said that it was somewhat well in how it reflected why the college existed. We had a number neutral. We had relatively few negative responses related to the statement, which is very encouraging to see. For our draft mission statement, which I read before, so Pima Community College empowers learners through accessible, high quality education that leads to university transfer, meaningful careers, and lifelong contribution aligned with industry and community needs. For this statement, we asked attendees, which of these described, how they felt about the draft mission statement. The highest proportion of respondents, 71 people in total, said that it was close but needs refinement. About 22 says it needed major revision, 32 liked it as written. So this indicates generally a strong, well-received statement, but with some things maybe missing or needing to be adjusted within there. And I'll touch on those open comment responses. Then the vision statement. I'll spend a little longer on this, so you know where the statement came from that was included in the prior slide. So in response to the request for a more aspirational statement, we developed a short list of six possibilities for consideration. Two were submitted directly by members of the governing board, and the other four were developed using generative A I, which we gave all of the input that we had received, and we asked it to write statements with a certain focus. Could be community facing. It could be something very balanced. It could be workforce focused. We just asked it to come up with a variety of different kinds of statements that we could think about. And we worked back and forth with the A I to try and fine tune for general categories that were different, to give a different feel and a different perspective for people to look at, to see what they liked, and find out what resonated. All based on its interpretation of the input to ensure there was no bias brought in by the process, by the people working on the statements. So using that, we had six statements. You see the first three listed here. I won't through read through all of these. But hopefully, you've had a chance to do that. But they touch on different aspects of the institution, the focus on partnerships. There's a statement talking about the premier institution. Option three is more of a focus on being a first choice education provider within Pima County. And then we have another, option four, which is more of a focus around the heart of education in Pima County, and how we serve the community and every learner. And then we get to option five and six. I won't give it well, I am going to give away the next slide, but so you can see the language here. Five and six were the most strongly supported by attendees at the Futures Conference. So I will pause and read through these as these ones resonated more so with respondents. Option six was the most popular. Pima Community College will be a catalyst for personal transformation, et cetera. You've heard this one before, because this is the one that was in included on the slide with all three, because it was a winning one. The backup that came second, Pima Community College will be Pima County's leading source of talent and lifelong learning, partnering with employers, supporting innovation, and providing education that evolves with people and careers. If I show you what those results look like, almost 50 people selected option six as their favorite of the statements, 28 selected option five, so a little over half, and then somewhere between four and 15 for the others. There was a gap between those top two and the other four options that they were considering at the at the event.
Dr. Richmond, can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
I didn't have the opportunity to attend the Futures Conference. Can you tell me a little bit about who attended these participants that were voting? Do you have an idea of their background, industries, or age range?
We do. We have the full attendee list, so I would be happy to share with the board information on who was there, so you can see who the participants were. We had a mix of community and internal representatives. We did not have many students at the event this time, I would note that for the board's awareness. We had roughly a third community attendees and two thirds internal attendees split across the main employee groups. Staff was the highest internal group in attendance. So it was a fairly mixed group. We always want to see more community at the Futures Conference, but the conference runs for a long time. It's a big ask of community members' time. But I would be happy to provide that full list, so you can see specifically the organizations.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. And I wanted to get an idea of who was voting. And it's good for me to hear that, like you said, about 60 some percent were internal staff members that contributed their their votes. Thank you.
What was the total number approximately at the Futures, so they have a sense of the end?
It was about 150.
I was gonna say, based on the numbers I counted, it was about 142.
Okay, great. Good. Oh, I start forward. All right. So option six is our most popular one. So that's a statement that we have in the framework for you to talk about. But please keep in mind option five, which was also well received by attendees at the event. So in terms of the feedback, you have all of the input, all 20 odd pages of it in the in the executive summary from the report. But in general, there were a handful of key themes that stood out, and they actually applied regardless of the statement. There's a lot of commonality of things that came up for each of them, particularly for purpose and mission. So categories included access, affordability, and opportunity. Affordability has long been an interesting word within the mission review process. Some people really like the word affordable. For others, they have concerns about it because it's relative. Affordable for one person is not affordable for someone else. The strategic planning team actually spent a fair chunk of time trying to come up with an alternative. How do we convey this in a different way? And ultimately landed back on affordable, because it's a different word to find an alternative for. But that's something that was a common theme.
Just really quick, I want to get clarification that the term affordability was desired or not wanted. And I didn't quite catch exactly where. I know it was a common theme, but was it in a positive way, or in a suggestion to find a synonym, I suppose?
In a positive way to include it.
I'm sorry, say that again?
It is a positive to include it. The people, the there was a value of having affordability captured within the statement.
Okay, thank you.
But the concern was, it's a relative term. Is there a better way that we could address that in the statement?
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Community connection and service was another strong theme that emerged across the input that we received. Transformation through education, that that hope, that potential, how we can change lives if people come to us, increase their education level, change their job, increase their earnings, the net effect on them, their family members, that kind of theme and sense of transformation and hope through education was came through with the comments. Innovation and adaptability was another priority that people saw it was important for the institution to innovate, be current, help the community stay current, keep up with the times as they change. Partnership and collaboration, the role of the institution working with other education providers, working with employers within the community and ensure we're meeting the needs of those groups. And that, of course, ties into workforce and economic impact, which was another priority topic that showed up through the discussions. So that brings us to the conversation. So we have that input around the statements. We have these drafts as they stand today. And I would like to open this up to the perspectives of the governing board. What do you think about these statements? Do you feel it reflects the institution? Is it is a vision aspirational, as you were looking for per the input before? What are your thoughts?
I've received a couple of emails from from community members who are concerned about not having the open entry. One of the men who wrote me, he might have written all of us, he said, you know, he was one of the founding faculty that started the college, and he said that the college was based on that model. And I'm, I don't know if we have to have the word in here, but I think we always need to, you know, praise Pima for being an open entry type institution. Another thing that I learned in the workshop was that to use the word affordable, it it may sound good or not sound good, but it's better. They they were saying to use your marketing department to show why Pima is the most affordable institution in southern Arizona right now. And it is, if you compare our tuition with any of the other institutions of higher education, whether it be for, you know, nursing, or the medical fields, or universities in the area, you know, our tuition is by far cheaper. So they were saying that they spent a good amount of energy and money in the marketing area. So those two words, affordable and the open entry, people who talked about Pima just knew that those two things happened. So that's, you know, if we don't have the words here, I think as long as we promote it other ways, it would be good.
Thank you.
Regarding vision, would it be helpful to bring up the one through three, three through six, or you good, you don't need that? You don't need it up.
I guess I've been, as I was reading the material over the weekend and thinking about it, and what I wanted to say, I think the vision statement is too long. It's not aspirational enough to what, now, I was one of the board members that had input, but I feel like even at the Futures Conference, I feel like we were were kind of wordsmithing it to death. So I'm not sure what to propose that we do. But I feel like my big question over the weekend was why? So why are we changing this? And if we are to change it, I would want it to be better than the current. I don't feel any of the things that we've come up with as a board, I think we we started working on this last spring and at the Futures Conference, is better than what we currently have. So if we're going to change it, I want to feel like it's a massive improvement. That's why we changed it, because it's way better.
Thank you. And as a note, keep in mind, the board does not have to change the statements. If you prefer the existing statement for all of these or any of these, it can stay the way it is. It's entirely the decision for the board.
Well, and I also want to acknowledge, I know that there's been a lot of work put into this. At the Futures Conference, I was at a table with one of the members of your committee. So I appreciate everybody's time and effort and work. And I've certainly thought a lot about it. And so I don't want to be dismissive at all in my comments about that. I just, I really want to feel inspired about the work that we're all doing and all the time that we're putting into making this institution the best for our students and our community. And I wish I had a magic wand where all our hopes and dreams and, you know, goals and ambitions could be articulated clearly and in the best way. And so I I'm not sure if if, you know, how to proceed. And I'm certainly open to any suggestions from the board for from you. But I I don't like the draft statements.
And if I can echo that, I think I've read all of these so much, and that they're all kind of one big paragraph for me now. I don't, I sometimes I can't even tell the difference. I have to go back and forth and look at them. So to answer your question, possibly that might help. But my question more along, kind of along with what a board member Barasa said, their marketing team, I'm assuming had something to do with helping wordsmith some of this? Or did they provide input from their Or did they provide input from their industry perspective?
That's a great question. So we had members of that team involved in different stages of the review. They are not directly part of the planning team, so that may be an opportunity to bring that team into the conversation.
Yeah, I would highly encourage that because that is their area of expertise. And if we can all share our vision, our, pun intended, if we could all share what we're seeing and what we're aspiring, maybe they can help us provide the wording that feels much more aspirational.
And Board Member Barasa, is this specific to the vision statement? How do you feel about the purpose and the mission?
Just to clarify, are these... These are not the current ones, right? These are the ones we recommended changes on, correct?
Correct. The original ones are available in the PowerPoint, and I can go back to those if you'd like to take a look.
Do you want to see them?
Yes, please.
There.
Great, see now I like some of this one and some of the other one.
It's difficult to get the wording just right in these statements, isn't it? And I would say, for the board's information, when we first started the review, we did a survey early in the process. A lot of people liked these statements. Some people implored, "Don't change them." "We just changed them three, four years ago." "We like it, we're learning to use them, we want to keep them." Others wanted to see changes, and that led us in the path of where we are now. But these were not... These were not statements that everyone disliked. There were elements of them that stood out that people did not like in some of these statements. But the survey results were generally positive for these as well.
When was the last time they were changed?
It was spring of '21, just before the most recent plan went online. So we changed them fairly considerably then. We added the purpose statement, the mission changed a lot, it had been much shorter. We developed our tagline and a larger body of language there. I don't remember what the vision was like beforehand, but all three changed at that point in time.
2021?
Yes.
So the strategic plan was informed by a whole different mission, vision, purpose statements?
This review for the vision ran in parall... Well, all three statements ran in parallel with the development of the strategic plan that came online in summer of 2021. So this was approved the meeting before, the strategic plan was approved. But kind of like this go-around, we're working on the plan, we're working on the review of the mission, kind of in parallel with each other.
How often or what is the standard? How typical is it to change your purpose, vision, and mission every time you change your strategic plan?
For Pima, we've done that pretty much every time. When Chancellor Flores was here, the mission statement remained fairly stable for the time he was with the institution. It was very short. We had a one-meeting review process for that, which is what the chancellor wanted at that point in time. So there was a period of stability during Chancellor Flores's years at the institution. Since then, every time we've conducted a review of the mission, we have changed statements.
Can I ask my fellow board members a question? How comfortable do you guys feel making a decision today, right now? I mean, I guess I'll start by answering myself. I don't. I feel like I need, I don't know, I need more. I need more time, I need more processing. And I've read through these all weekend long, and I read through them this morning again. And I apologize, because we don't want to waste your time, but I just want to be honest and say that I don't feel 100% comfortable making that final decision right now.
And that's fine. The reason for the session was actually, we wanted to bring the statements back to the board to get your input and your feedback, precisely so that we could find out, are we going the right way around the vision statement? Are we not going the right way around the vision statement? As it stands, for example, we plan to bring the board to the plan to the board in June. We can bring these statements to the board at the same time. They don't have to be approved months before the plan, they can be, but they don't have to be. So the work can continue. It's our job as an institution to make sure you have the input and the information you need to feel comfortable making a decision about what the purpose, mission, and vision of the institution should be. If there's additional information you need, if there are additional study session-type things you need, just let us know, and we will make sure that we proceed in that direction, so you have the input that you need.
So just some... Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. You know, when we've had this conversation before, I'm pretty much okay with anything. In my mind, the purpose and mission statement are maybe more technical, and the vision statement is sort of that canvas where we could be potentially a little bit more creative. When we had done that, I had looked up different vision statements across the country. And there's some really interesting ones out there. Two that stood out to me, Austin Community College. Their vision statement is "To love our students to success." That's it. And I think that's beautiful. It's weird, but that's Austin for you. They're definitely sticking to their city's mission statement. If anybody's from Austin, it's "Keep Austin Weird," yeah. One other one that I really liked was from Bright Point Community College, "A success story for every student." And I just thought it was beautiful. It paints... Right. It's... This is where we could be beautiful, you know? This is our opportunity. So maybe we need to think in a different direction. I think, you know, the purpose and mission statement, like I said, is where we can be kind of technical, get those elements we want nailed down. But if we want to be poets, maybe the vision statement is where we can do that. Thank you.
I want to... There's no vote, but I want to echo that. I love the idea of having our personality shine through that vision statement.
Yeah, those are cool. I mean, just to throw my two cents in there, if it's helpful to you, I guess to sort of paraphrase a scene in Ted Lasso, all of these are fine. The one we have now is fine, any of those options are fine. I don't really don't understand how any of them changes who we are, what we do. I don't feel like any of them make me feel like I've been struck by lightning. I don't know that they have to. The... But I guess going back to the point of like, if we're... Like, why? I mean, I just, I keep circling around, why do we need to change any of these things? The... Unless we're like fundamentally trying to change something about who we are, and if that is why, I don't know that any of the ones we have now really do that. So I... It's kind of six of one and a half dozen of another for all of them, for me. So I don't know if that's helpful. Like, I mean, just because I don't feel like I entirely understand why we need to change them at all. And I don't mean to like diminish the work that's been done, I just don't understand why. The... And if there isn't really a reason why we need to change them, I almost feel like, why are we spending all this time and effort trying to wordsmith something when the ones that we have is fine, just to change it to something else, that's fine? The... I just don't know that it makes a big difference. But if some folks or others on the board feel strongly that we should keep working, that's fine with me, too. The... But my... Kind of where my thoughts have coalesced is just, is just sort of around that. Like, I don't think any of these things are going to be revolutionary for who we are or what we do, in which case, why are we doing this?
I have one last quick comment. I think for me more, the focus is, where do people find our mission and vision and purpose? And I have to be honest with you, I looked on our website, it took me about five clicks to find it. I shouldn't have to click five times to find out what our purpose is. Just a note for general, for when people are trying to find out who we are, it shouldn't take them that long, they should be at the forefront.
I kind of agree with you, Chair Taylor. I'm okay, I'm fine with leaving the purpose and mission statement the way that it is. As far as the vision statement, I'm fine either leaving it or completely, you know, going in that like really, you know, unique direction. So I guess if the board is interested in just maybe being creative with the vision statement, I'd like a crack at it. If we're not, then I'm fine also with the one that we have.
Months and months ago, I mentioned that I had problems with the mission statement. And so I just want to reiterate my thoughts here again. Empower every learner every day for every goal. I think that is an impressive idea, but I was a mother of two sons and I worked hard for them. And I can't say I empowered them every day for every goal. And so I just think that that statement is, you know, when we have students who can't register for classes, we fail that. When we can't, when we don't have students who, you know, know where to, you know, apply for financial aid, we fail that. When we have students that can only go into an online class and they don't want an online class, we fail that. So I just think that the mission, that mission statement doesn't talk to me like any of the other two on the top or any of the other ones that we have had written. I just, I'm concerned about that mission statement. I don't like it as much as something that we could write that would be better. Makyla wants to rebut my argument. Oh.
Just one note, and I actually agree with you that, you know, it's a tough mission. But I guess the point of a mission statement is to have like a goal, not to be like, well, this mission statement's easier, so we'll stick with that one. Because we want to kind of shoot for the stars and reach the moon kind of thing. But I'm totally okay if you want to go ahead and scrap and, you know, do a new mission statement. Fine is a four-letter word, so I'm fine with the mission statement. I'm not in love with it, totally okay, whatever the will of the board is.
So just a why-type question and a random thought that I just had that I haven't even talked to Nick about. But when we write our accreditation assurance arguments, we have to speak to how we are fulfilling our mission. So making sure that our mission is what we do and really represents the reason that we are here is an important piece. I think that most people I talk to, empower every learner every day for every goal, they've got that. I don't think most people realize the rest of those words are also part of our mission. They all explain the mission, and they're great, but most people know the tagline, right? Teresa, you're kind of mentioning that that just seems like pie in the sky type thing. That sounds like vision to me, and you want it aspirational, and everybody already likes empower every learner every day for every goal in terms of remembering what we're doing, and it seems like a huge stretch. I don't know, maybe that becomes your mission, from your mission to your vision, and you come up with a mission that you can show accreditors, this is why we're here, this is what we do. But that's our large vision for Futures.
That's exactly why I brought it up. It was after HLC when I went to one of those workshops, and they said that they're going, they're changing how they're doing accreditation, right? And they're going to see how everything we do is aligned to our mission. Yeah.
So now I'm wondering, do we have our vision and our mission right here wrapped up in our current mission statement? The vision is empower every learner every day for every goal, and the mission is, "As an Open Admissions Community College..." dot, dot, dot. Which is an excellent idea, Makyla. But what are the thoughts of the board? Where do we go from here? What would you like to see happen next as we work forward on this?
It sounds like if... It sounds like most folks are interested in at least redoing the mission statement. Is that correct?
I'm not necessarily interested in changing it, but I can understand, and I can jump on board in changing it if that's what the majority wants.
I feel exactly the same way, but I want to make space for... I mean, it sounds like Teresa, at least Board Member Real. Mostly, you want to start over with the mission statement?
No, what Makyla jogged my memory, that was exactly why I brought it up the first time after HLC in February, I think it was in February, because I went up to somebody afterwards and I said, hey, this is our mission statement. She says, you know, "Just as long as you can prove that that's true and everything else that you show us, that's good." That was why it worried me.
Board Member Barasa, you're very quiet. I'm still digesting the proposal for the vision statement. And by the way, I've always loved that tagline, so being able to keep it somehow, I really like. My only concern is, will it be interpreted as, oh, this was their mission and they didn't accomplish it, so now they're... Sort of to what you said. That would be my only concern, that, oh, they did it, they changed it to something aspirational, because they can't do that, if that makes sense. But I've always loved that tagline.
I know that Phil's online as well, I'd love to hear what he has to say as well.
Phil?
Maybe we can follow up with him. Oh, there he is.
Sorry, just trying to get my camera working here. Can you go ahead and repeat the question?
Oh, I just wanted to hear your thoughts and opinions about the current mission statement and the proposed mission statement. From a marketing and communications standpoint, I wanted to hear your thoughts.
So those statements are really not used in marketing because they don't have... I mean, they're, for better, for lack of a better word, they're kind of bureaucratic language. They're not marketing language. And so if our target audience is Gen Z, they wouldn't... We can't really use those kind of language to motivate them to come to Pima. We use other language.
Okay, then I have a follow-up question. What do we use, other than for HLC accreditation, what do we use these statements for? And the question is in general to the chancellor, to Dr. Richmond, to anybody else that wants to answer that.
Yeah, I think you, you know, the mission of the college is always something that any accreditation wants you to have, right, and to understand, and that you're following. If you look at the mission statement we have, it says things like, "We commit to," right? It's kind of in that bottom half, I don't know if that slide's pulled up still. Right? "We commit to," right, "trying to meet the diverse needs," right? "We strive for excellence in teaching." True, we do strive for excellence in teaching, right? "We align our programs with meaningful careers." That is something we do. You don't always accomplish every mission, right? And that's certainly something I come from, from a military background. You have a mission, sometimes you fall short of that mission, but it's something you're always working to. And that's one that does get the attention of any accreditor, like, are you aligned to that mission? So it is important to kind of have a statement of mission, you know, a mission statement first and foremost. Purpose, not all institutions have a purpose statement. There is a Venn diagram happening here, right? There is some overlap between purpose, mission, and vision. I know from an accrediting standpoint, mission is upfront, it's identified in the standards. That's an important one that you have to actually demonstrate. To me, that's the primary verbiage that you need. I think vision's nice, you know, where are you heading in the future? It is aspirational. I think, you know, you picked out Austin Community College, Aspen recipient, Lowry Hart's, a well-known president in the community college sectors. Love is his big theme there. I think that did, right, does reflect the personality, it's aspirational. So no, I think they're very personal. I think Phil, from marketing, he's thinking about enrollment, right, bringing in students. His focus is on that group that he's thinking about. They may not feed directly into the marketing campaign for the spring enrollment, but they should be aligned, right, to where the mission is, right, to reach out to these students. So they're important. I think I do feel I agree with... I think I do feel I agree with our chair's observation. How much if you change a word here or there? How does it impact, you know, the daily work of the team, the students that are in class right now and in evening class, the programs that we're setting up? I mean, I don't know, that's, that's tough to measure. But I think it is an important part that we arrive somewhere at the board, find some consensus, some way or another around these things. And this is perfect for a study session though, right? This is exactly the kind of conversation and dialogue we have, uh, for a study session. I think what we're, our team's trying to come out of this with is where do we go forward? Do we just focus on vision? Do we move some things around? Do we bring back some alternatives, uh, that have been suggested here tonight? I, I've got some good individual pieces here as we go back through the transcripts, but is there a collective direction that we can, uh, take off, you know, back to the team and say, okay, this is where the, the, the board would like us to go moving forward? I, I've heard of variations of keep everything the same, close the book on this, you're done, to, well, keep a couple of things or move some things around or start from scratch. Where would you like us to, to head? So I think it's a conversation that maybe we need to have in the next few minutes, you know, to try to, to get us, you know? How do we, what do we take out of this? But great dialogue, this is, this is really good. It's really informative for us. So I guess I answered two questions there.
Well, I was going to ask, we have a retreat on Saturday. Do we want to revisit this?
Are you extending the duration of the Saturday governing board retreat? We can, we can certainly, we could add it to the agenda.
I'm also intrigued what Michaela was going to say. I see her over there.
Sorry, you guys have me thinking. It sounds like you want change if you're going to change it, right? And you had a theme going with your, the love Austin and everything else. At the Futures Conference, our table was all made up of internal people. And we were talking about a similar thing about how that tagline, the empower every learner every day for every goal was powerful. And so we reorganized some of the thoughts a little bit and I didn't, I don't know if this after got to Nick, but I took a picture of it. And it goes, centers around the word empower. So if that's a word that you like, maybe you want to think about it. We had basically, I'll, I'll read it, I don't have it in a good form to give you, but it was, um, Pima Community College empowers students to, or for, and then we had a thing for every letter of empowers. And it was educational excellence, meaningful relationships, personal goals, opportunity for growth, workforce development, economic prosperity, reasonable cost, and seamless pathways. And so you could consider reforming your vision to what our mission was. And then the mission possibly to those pieces. And you can then demonstrate how you do each of those as you go forward. The only other thing I would say is with that, I would maybe change the purpose to the one that everybody had voted on, which was expanding opportunity through quality education. There was a lot of, uh, feedback from students and fact, and staff that affordable, um, while the Futures Conference, and it seems like people who work here in community like affordable, our students didn't. It was a, a lot of students who kind of were like, what's that mean? I still can't afford it. I have to choose between food and getting to class, like, and in this time, quality might be where we need to focus because affordable is so up in the air and whether they can get those things. Um, and we had some staff who mentioned transforming lives implies that what they have now just isn't worth it. And so expanding opportunity was more of a positive frame and less of a deficit, um, language. So if you want to go through that, you have your expanding opportunity, then your empowers would carry through, through mission and vision. And we can, I can get that to Nick, sorry.
Thanks, Michaela. I appreciate the feedback. I really wanted to hear what you had to say and I appreciate the comments.
So in terms of getting you an answer, Nick, I, I mean, I, I will be honest and say that I'm where I was before. This is all fine. Like I, but I also don't really have an answer, to be totally honest with you, at least not to my satisfaction of like why we need to do this at all. But if there is interest among the board, that also doesn't mean that I want to like try to get in the way of that. So if other folks want to keep moving through this process, okay, I'm, I'm happy to go through that process, too. But, um, I do not have strong feelings one way or the other, to be totally honest.
Chair Taylor, I would love the opportunity on Saturday to melt your cold heart with my beautiful vision statement, uh, proposals that I have not written yet.
I know there's not a vote on the floor, but I want to second that. So it seems we're going to move forward to Saturday, having, continuing the conversation on Saturday.
Okay. Are we good?
Okay, we'll, we'll adjust the, the board retreat agenda to include the conversation.
All right. So let's carry on to our last topic. Let me shoot forward. So integrated planning. We've talked about the framework a little bit. Of course, we've talked about our guiding statements around purpose, mission, and vision. So as mission review is underway, planning is also underway to determine the next set of priorities for the institution. So this involves a wide number of groups, the strategic planning team. There are a variety of other planning teams. For example, I mentioned the IT strategic planning team. And Chancellor's cabinet is strongly engaged with this work as well. We've got lots of engagement activities underway. We have approximately monthly planning days for employees so they can be involved in the planning process. The Futures Conference, of course. And we're in the process of bringing online some student lunch events to engage students in that process as well. But for today, what we would like to do is invite the board's input and your perspectives and leadership around the major priorities and initiatives that from your perspective should be in the next strategic plan and the priority areas around which we should be thinking as we bring forward priorities for the board's consideration. So this is a very open-ended question, really about where do you see the critical priorities for the institution? Do you appreciate our plans and the approach to building around key performance indicators? And if yes, are there particular measures at the institution you would like to see improve? Retention, enrollment, graduation transfer, for example? Um, and so really a wide open question, inviting, um, leadership and perspectives from the board as we think about the priorities that will inform the plan.
I know we're a educational institution, that's foremost and the most important. But I think due to the changing environment at the federal and level, state continuing more to see of the same, I'd like to see revenue, uh, opportunities for the college. I think we have to be smart about maximizing our assets. We have a lot of real estate, a lot of square footage. How can we make money with our assets to support our students and our programs?
Great, thank you.
I'll go if nobody else is ready to jump in. Workforce alignment, I mean, is, is I think the most important thing for me. We, we've talked about this before in board meetings, but, you know, I think we've done a fantastic job with the Centers of Excellence in terms of meeting community need, but there needs to be a process to assess how those needs evolve or if there are new needs and then what either new programs or, or changes to existing programs do we need to do to make sure that our students, uh, can continue to be competitively employed at a, you know, a family living wage like the Centers of Excellence were designed to do? What, what are the, what are the next Centers of Excellence that we need and how do we identify what those are? Or are there changes to, uh, the existing programs that, uh, that we need to do? And then I would also echo similarly on the revenue side. I would like us to be thinking about how we sustain at least the core of what we are and what we do, um, over the long term with local funds that are within our control. The, uh, so that any, you know, state or federal dollars is, is nice, uh, you know, sprinkles on the cupcake. But the cupcake and the icing on the cupcake all comes from things that, uh, can't be canceled or pulled away from us midstream, uh, in, in that we're living through right now. So how do we, how do we really think about ourselves as an institution that's sustaining on diversified revenue sources to Board Member Barasa's point, but local revenue sources?
Great, thank you. Other comments or perspectives?
I can keep going. I was trying to make space for others, if anybody else has one, but, um, you know, enrollment growth, I think is something that, that we always want to be thinking about. But, um, but honestly, in, in the conversations that we've had since Dr. Nasty joined us, in my head anyway, uh, I think retention has become a higher priority for me than enrollment growth. I mean, I'd still love to see our enrollment continue to grow, but, um, I would like us to sort of double down effort on ways that we retain our current students, you know, identify what barriers might be causing them to leave us and figure out how we can address those barriers, which may get me, you know, and we, someone mentioned earlier, I forget who, you know, we were just at the Association of Community College Trustees Conference, but one of the sessions I attended was a presentation from, uh, San Juan Community College in New Mexico, not too far from us, but, uh, is right near the Navajo Nation. And they were talking about, you know, they've had a concerted effort over the last few years about meeting the food security, housing, and healthcare needs of their students. Uh, and they're kind of, they're not in a large urban center like we are, so they don't have a lot of community resources that can do those things. They've had to build a lot of their own stuff, quite literally. And I'm not necessarily saying we do that, but I, I would like us to think through and under the, in the vein of, uh, retaining our students, how do we, uh, break down some of those barriers to success that might be beyond what we traditionally think of as educational barriers, but we know keep them from educational success like all the things I just mentioned.
Thank you.
Um, one thing that just popped into my mind, I was talking to, um, our athletic director when I went to one of those games at the West Campus and we were talking about the grade point average of our student athletes. And it's very high, I think it's like 3.3 something, if I'm not mistaken. And, you know, I think that we need to, uh, work with each other to, as Greg was saying, improve persistence and retention because we already have them. It's easier to keep them, I believe, than to get new students to come into the college. And as we are working on that persistence and retention, you know, talk to the people who are doing those great things, you know? How did, how did the athletic department get their students to get those great grades? Because in, in my experience at Pima, I don't think that was always the case. I think it's been the case in the last decade or two, um, that they've been doing great things like that. I think, you know, the, the programs that those students do, um, it's, it's a community. And, you know, one thing is, you know, as Greg was saying, if, if we're trying to meet their needs, uh, food insecurity, housing insecurity, all of those other things, he's talking about a healthy community working together. And so I think it, it, it all works together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going along with what was mentioned earlier with workforce development, I would say workforce development, but what's something that Chancellor Nasty often talks about is having, um, industry-driven curriculum and programming specifically. I think that we could really have the Centers of Excellence be the driving engines behind industries like optics and photonics, artificial intelligence, cybersecurity. I think we could really focus on identifying those gaps that we have in our community and, and in those conversations with industry partners and be able to support them. And, and we have it available through either microaccreditation or the short-term certificate programs that we have.
Thank you. Other comments, other input at this stage? You will, of course, have additional opportunities to be involved. I mentioned the study session that we'll have in the spring. If there are other engagement efforts in way the board that would like to be connected with the planning process, um, we are happy to, to do whatever you would like to see in terms of your involvement as that process moves forward. The next thing scheduled, as I say, is in March, but if there's any, anything between then and now the board would like to see, please, of course, let us know and we'll make sure we take that into account and plan for that in the process.
I have one, one other, sorry, final thought that just popped into my head, but it kind of related to mine and what Carla said, just kind of jogged my, sorry, Vice Chair Brunel Morello said, it just kind of jogged my, uh, my memory. The, but the bachelor's degree, so continuing to expand our, our offering of, uh, bachelor's degrees to the extent that's allowable, um, by what was passed by the legislature. I know we, we certainly have the education one on the horizon and I've seen some emails and some mentions of others that are in the works, but I, I would love to see us continue to expand, uh, those full undergraduate offerings.
Great, thank you. Wonderful. Thank you so much for your input and your advice and leadership today on these topics. They're important items as we move forward. Thank you for your input. Chancellor, would you like to say anything to wrap up?
Just thank you for a great session. I mean, I think we got a tremendous amount of information out of this, so, so helpful and, uh, so impressed by the board's preparation and participation in the topic. So this is what I look for in, in terms of a study session. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody, absolutely. So let's move on to 2.2, uh, which is next on the agenda. So I'll just go ahead and make the motion if someone wants to second it for us to go into executive session.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, all right, then we will move into executive session. Thank you, everyone.